For Monday, March 4th, 2019, please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Councilman Corrigan?
Present.
Councilman Lewis?
Present.
Councilman Cross?
Present.
Councilman Taylor?
Present.
Councilman Pat Strachan?
Present.
Councilman Montzow?
Present.
And President Scanlon?
Present.
It's all seven here.
Okay.
Chuck, do you do Bernices or?
I'm gonna do Bernice, let me let these guys go.
Okay, yeah, yep.
Sure Yanis, you can jump up first.
Okay. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Any questions?
No, you're done.
Before Joe starts, Jill, you asked me a question last time, did I know of any other ones? I will tell you, I had a complete blank for a senator up on my office Tuesday morning. I was talking about Joe's, so.
Two eighteen, budget amendments, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Joe, these invoices are from, what are they, two invoices for?
Okay. Because the Joint Sewer Treatment Plant can't take our sludge anymore, we have to remove it ourselves. So we have to hire a company to come in and clean down our basins twice a year. And it's not a cheap deal. It's more expensive than going down the other way.
How much more, how much more is it?
I think this is over a hundred thousand dollars. Oh yeah, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars each time.
More than going to the sewer treatment plant with it?
Yes. Well, they, they were getting up there to around three hundred thousand.
For the year? You, you think around four hundred thousand?
What happened with that, because wasn't that originally sort of our decision?
Well, in a way, in a way not. They, they really, because of their process, they're going down there now, they, they can't accept that stuff for some reason, it screws up.
They can't take it down there right now with all the work going on.
It doesn't really help their system out. Even, even when they're gonna be able to take it, it doesn't really do them any good, they don't really want it.
So you're working on getting?
We're working on a whole new system.
Where you're not gonna take it down there anyway?
Well, we'll say that yet, it's still all in the works, we're doing the first phase.
Okay, but I mean, we talked about it two years ago.
Yeah, yes, it's quite an expensive process in its own right.
But I remember, you know, two years ago, when we were talking about this new possible extraction system, and I remember at the sewer board meetings, you know, them talking about no longer accepting the city sludge, them characterizing it at least, and I don't know what, it's a true story, but them characterizing it as the city doesn't wanna send this to us anymore. That it was not them saying we can't take this anymore, but that it was the city saying that we don't wanna do this anymore.
Going back to about 2015, part of that reason was their budgets were so far out of control, okay? That it was making that cost effective instead of. But we, they were putting in millions of dollars of capital money and not spending it, once we cut all that stuff out, it dropped to down to the number that Joe was talking down to, say a quarter of a million dollars a year, which is more reason.
But it doesn't sound like this is very cost effective either?
This isn't cost effective, but this couldn't, they couldn't take it down there today the way it's all performed, period.
So we would've had to do this anyway, whether it was then or now?
Right, yes.
That is the case today.
The problem's a future.
Sure.
What we're gonna do with it. It's just, it's such a convoluted problem for them, for us.
Well presumably, when it's up and running again, they could take it. When it's up a hundred percent.
If you don't mind me just interrupting a minute. They should take it, that is correct, they don't want to take it really because it's river silt, so it's grit. Tamper's their process.
Right.
Because it just sits in the bottom, it can kill the bugs. Plus, running it through the system will put wear and tear on their system.
Sure.
So eventually, it's gonna be taken away from them with their extraction system. However, because of the capital cost in that system, we wanna break it into multiple projects. Directly if I'm a year, a hundred percent, and multiple grants associated with it.
Because it's an expensive, it's an expensive process.
Councilman Pat Strachan?
So Joe, the company that, that takes it away every six months or whatever, what are they doing?
It goes to landfill.
They come in with, they come in the machinery in a bunch of, a crew of guys, and they actually suck it out, dry it out, bring it down to twenty or thirty percent of water, and then they can ship it to the landfill. In a special section, they can dump it in. But it's a cost, it's costly. They're, they're from out of state. And there's only a few companies that do it, and they, they put a bid in on it, and they were the lowest bidders.
If it goes to landfill, can't you do it, like, you said, twice a year, do it every month? And where it would be a local, all that could dig it?
Well, I don't know, I'm, if, if we could get a new, uh, we were trying to get this vacuum sludge system in there, and I was, I was figuring if we could get that in there, it would, it would, it wouldn't build up. Because here's our problem, in the wintertime, we can't run the slug system, the slug, we call it slug. We can't run the system because it freezes. And that, it just breaks, and you just, you just can't run it. So the, the stuff has to sit in there until spring. So by the time spring comes along, it's, it's way built up to where it's gonna be detrimental to our water quality, which I can't have, I can't violate that, because it, it'll be even a bigger problem. So we gotta remove this stuff. So usually, we remove it in the spring, and in the fall, just before winter.
Credit this?
Yeah. But if we had a system, and, and, you know, we've looked into this, I don't know if, if, if they'll ever be able to be done, but we had a system where we, we could remove it continuously without it building up, it might not be as bad as a problem. But still, the Joint Sewer Treatment Plant, really, they don't, the stuff we get out of the river is mainly silt, and that, and their process is mostly biological, and this stuff will, it just kills it because it, once it coats it, it just kills their system. Plus, this type of silt is very aggressive on their machinery, and it wears it out, so they really don't want it. And it's a weird problem. I, I was up in Troy, they do the same thing, they, they have, they have a system, but they had to build a big tank. But they're up there by Albany, and they got all these grants because they're right around Albany. Whereas, we're down here in Bamington, we're, they don't really care about us in Albany. Not as much.
Basically, what we got is a three million dollar grant from a six million dollar, basically, phase one of a, either a two or three phase operation cost. We cannot afford to go do a twelve million dollar project and not double or triple our water rates. You know, already what's going on with the sewer rates. So we're working our way to the phases to do this. But no matter what, we had to do this while the plant's being constructed.
Right, right.
And that, that plant probably won't be done for another.
It's gonna be running in August.
It probably won't be done for another. I'm thinking it does.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the problem, and that's why we gotta transfer money to payment banks.
Any other questions? That's usually, thank you for coming down.
Okay.
Yep.
That closed.
Right out the door.
So. This is a resolution nineteen fifty-three.
Fifty-three, okay.
It's an agreement with GHD for professionally engineering services to coordinate and assist with the New York State Department of Health lead service line replacement. We selected GHD because there's only a handful of companies at the time that are doing this work. They have a contract with the city of Buffalo, so they're.
Questions or comments? Yes, Councilman Corrigan?
So, this, this work of tearing up, of replacing the goosenecks, will they be tearing up the sidewalk in order to get at them? Are they gonna be coming at it from the street?
The street.
With all of them?
The goosenecks come right off the main.
Right.
And some of them are still lead, and this is what we're trying to get rid of, any lead that's in this.
Some are at the.
Well, some might be at the curb box, but that's, that would be in the, usually in the grass area between the sidewalk and.
Okay, utility strip. How did the city determine that there, there aren't any lead service lines coming from the, from the street? That was in the description on this. It said that the city had determined that there weren't any lead service lines. I was just wondering what that process looked like, how we figured that out?
Well, we went through our records, and we, we just assumed where there is, hasn't been any, you know, like, new main put in or construction done in that area, there's possibility that some of these could be still black, old lead. And that's how, that's how we figured, you know, we have to remove it, we have to get rid of it. And we've been doing that right along anyway, but this is just a grant from the state that they've given us to help us push that along.
Okay. And, and when you, so let's say you dig up a, dig up one of these goosenecks, and you see a lead service line coming out, will, will, will you actually know if there's a lead service line? Can you eyeball it? Okay. And will be, will we be letting homeowners know that there's a lead service line going into their, their house, that they should probably replace it?
Every couple of years, we do lead counter, we have to do lead counter for the federal government. A lot of these people already know, they, they're already known, some don't, but, you know, some of these pipes are pretty old.
Also, on page four of the contract with GHD, you can see that there's some room for GIS mapping, mapping of the surface lines.
Yeah, that was actually gonna be my next question. It said also in there that the, the GIS mapping may or may not be covered?
They're checking into that.
Okay, how important is the GIS mapping?
Very important, right now.
Yeah.
Remember the card catalog, you used to go to the library, and they had the card catalog.
You don't need to tell me.
That's what, that's our system.
Okay.
For our water, that's.
Awful.
And your house is in Bamington, New York, so and so street. You said to me, what's my, how old's my service? I go to that card, and if the guy who happened to work on it that day, you know, didn't fill that card out, we, we don't really know what, what went on there, or how old it is, or what, but that's our system, because we've never been modernized up to that.
So it sounds like it'd be pretty difficult to actually do this, to coordinate with the, with the water main replacement and street construction without GIS mapping. So, like, if, if that's not covered in the grant, that's something that we'd probably be seeing you guys coming back to have us cover that as well?
Could be, it's, it's, could be.
Okay.
Possibility.
And it said also in there that there is gonna be a, a process for identifying minority of women businesses to, to run part of the contract?
Because it's a state grant.
Yep.
All state grants have.
It's state mandated.
It's mandated that you have to.
Right.
You either have to use one, or you have to show a good faith effort that you tried to find someone to assist.
And they're not easy to find.
Yeah, that was, that was actually the question I was gonna ask, how, how likely do you think it is we'd find somebody to do this?
Well, they might have another, they might hire another consulting firm to assist them.
Okay.
That's MWBE.
Right.
And there are some of those around.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ray.
Yeah. Thank you both.
Joe, you can stay for the next one if you want to.
Okay.
Chuck, what do you wanna go now, you wanna do Bernices?
Let Juliet go.
Okay.
I have something that's probably gonna need to go.
Okay. Welcome Juliet.
Hello. Juliet.
Councilman, our one nine dash four seven, please.
There eight, this is a grant that we applied for, from the Department of Energy, to conduct a historic structural study. Stone Opera House is a grant. The structural report will give us information on what can be done when that whole place is proven on, so that the student additional funding hopefully can restore it and lay it back into use. So seventy-five thousand dollar grant, we're awarding, twenty-five thousand is mandatory, and the property owner, Winston Chen, has agreed to provide that.
Sorry.
Did you say Winston Chen?
Winston.
Win, got it.
No, Winston, Winston, no two.
Winston.
So essentially, what's going to happen is, City Council would accept the seventy-five thousand dollar grant from the state, and then we're getting a letter of intent from Winston to both access the building and for him to donate up to twenty-five thousand to cover the remainder costs of the project. So that would be the, so we'd get two funding sources. Right now, we have the state grant, and once we get the letter from Winston, we'll run it down for another side of the funding mechanism. State required a twenty-five percent match, and then we got Winston to put that money up rather than, you know, there's some else to.
So who, who are the, who are these two property owners? Who are, what's Bing Stone LLC, and Futures Strand LLC, and Mr. Chen?
He is the principal on both LLCs.
Okay.
Yep.
And who is he?
He's a local downtown property owner, and he owns. He owns, he owns one seventeen Court, he owns the, also owns the place where the pizzeria shop is, on the corner of Wash, Washington and Court as well. He owns Dampi too.
Yep.
So he's, he's a little bit passive, is moving forward, so we're trying to help that process, get him to address some of that. And I think the mayor's office, looking at that, and then planning department as well, looking for grants to help, help incentivize him.
As a part and parcel of four ongoing criminal prosecutions.
He is?
He is.
Plausible.
Where? I think he has misunderstood you.
City, they're part of housing, both for registration, they can property, and for better to maintain. And because of the giant, Herculean task that would be to bring both of those properties up and keeping with the historic importance of them in our community, those actions have been stayed, having his best efforts and cooperation according to our state grant programs that would bring him those funds. He may not, and I think he's required, make the statement specifically about the grant, he's required to put up the funds, but it's possible, I think, according to the grant program, that he can turn around and sell them. But those, those requirements, as far as development, will run with the land.
Right.
It's still a carrot and stick situation.
Is his intent to be a partner with the city and develop these properties, or is intent to let us help him fix it up a little bit and then sell them?
That's my question.
It's hard to crawl into anyone's head, and I dare not do it, especially with Winston Chen. However, I think right now, I think there is a alignment of interest on both, bringing those properties forward. And he, he understands, as we brought that to him, with both, again, I think the chance and the stick part of it, this, this grant is a carrot part of it, of bringing that together, and having something that's, one of the big problems in developing this, I think the mayor's discussed this in the past, one of the big challenges in developing this, properties like this, it's an enormous building. And you look at it, and without a plan to do it, without some architectural or engineering drawings to do it, it's very difficult to start. His grant kinda starts opening those things to allow a developer, someone other than Chen, who's better capitalized than Chen, to go out there and say, oh, okay, instead of having this, you know, you know, a rubble filled building that really, the Stone Opera House is at this point. You have something, you know, you'll, we'll be able to have it straightened out a little bit, we'll have much better, clearer idea saying, the walls are old and wobbly, you know, we'll have an engineer saying, what, what the loading sources are, whether it can stay, whether it can be fixed, whether, you know, move forward one way or the other. And I think, I think it's a, a great opportunity that the state is, is giving us to try to, to, you know, move this forward, getting Mr. Chen moving in the right direction. And as, since we are, I think at this point, it'd be fair to say, aligned in the same direction right now, I think it's a great time to seize the opportunity and go.
This is for George developing the property, giving additional funding, applying for grants. The fact that he's willing to put some on use, says a lot.
A few years ago, SUNY Room students put forth some designs and ideas for that, for those buildings. Are they still in your office, are they available?
I've seen some drawings, I know Wayne Kerber has, has done drawings as well, like fifteen years ago. I, I, I saw some smaller ones, but nothing that was.
We actually did.
It's really kinda rendering.
Not only just renderings, but ideas of how to develop.
Right, there's nothing that's structured, like a developer needs something structural, since we're in towards, like, the structural part of that. That's really.
The one figure held twenty-seven hundred.
Has the city been approached by any other possible developers, or even?
Twenty-seven hundred people?
Quasi, I mean, has the city been, been approached by, by folks with ideas that are at least semi-serious?
People, people have done, and we, the city has brought people to the site as well, including any folks, actually a gentleman who does it, historic tax credits, one of the largest historic tax credit developers out of Virginia, and, and to the site. And they looked at it, and they just, one of the things, and this is one of the things that helped drive this, is that they were saying, well, there's a lot of unknowns here. We, we know, it's hard to, you know, we have, we have been approached by a lot of people, there are a lot of unknowns here, and we'd like to kind of, you know, round that in. We walked in a really dark dank building that had a lot of grit, and it, and they were, I think they would feel a lot better, and they, you know, felt like something was, was stuck. And I think that there's, as I said, this is an opportunity for the state, and actually, Winston, if he was totally passive, that if just said, well, not my problem, not coming up with the money, and then make that our problem, he, he actually discredited. And I'm probably, one of his harshest critics, preferably not us, but to his credit, he stepped up, so. As I said, we are, we are at least temporary alignment, but we are aligned.
That's the law, because his experience is law.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, they have a, um, environmental studies done, because air quality and environmental, yeah, okay. Um, any type of work on that building, is there any kind of, any review? Just to see if the containment of the air quality. Or. Okay.
Well, on the bright side, you're more like you get coarse hair plaster than asbestos.
Well, that's good.
Thank you, Bernie Deff. Sorry, any other question?
Yeah, Sharon, do you think you could, whatever we can be looped in on with respect to the four criminal investigations that are going on this guy?
Well, they're not investigations, if they were investigations, we'd have to be in the executive session.
Okay.
Without them, they're publicly filed accusatory instruments in Binghamton City Court, and those actions have been stayed and will likely be dismissed without prejudice on motion, should council accept, accept this plan.
And what are the addresses of the properties that are subject to those?
It's the Stone and Strand.
Oh, these, okay, excellent, alright.
So this is.
Those properties specifically.
So this is trying to get him to fix up those properties.
But acceptance of the grant is kind of the, would be, I guess, in the judge's perception, to say, yes, it looks like there's some sort of a formalized working relationship that's gonna move forward.
I would say are, that would trigger the prosecutorial discretion to dismiss the action without prejudice due to good faith efforts by the property owner.
Got it. What, what sort of fines is he in for, if he wasn't putting in twenty-five thousand dollars?
Well, that's a very good question. So, under our Binghamton State Code, those fines, as far as failure to maintain a property, are five hundred dollars per charge. You can have a charge for a thousand dollar a day violation, but that's only if you have found guilty verdicts for each day of that violation, i.e. an ongoing violation, and notice the violation is served, so generally, there isn't a per diem violation. So it's five hundred dollars per charge. And as far as the failure to register a vacant property, Mr. Chen did comply with both of those, paying five fifty per property for a total amount of three thousand dollars. If lawyers could do that, we wouldn't be lawyers, but at the end of the day, it would be roughly about five thousand dollars compared to the twenty-five thousand he's gonna be putting on right now.
Okay.
So if we're going now, we're getting way more into the properties directly.
Correct.
Appreciate that.
Um, he also was current on the property taxes.
Other questions? Thank you, Juliet.
Are the department heads not answering your questions correctly, to your liking?
Exactly, you got it in the tax, you got it in the county tax options, on both of those properties. They could collect about a hundred, it was like sixty-five, or like sixty.
That one, the road?
So you can't answer it? I thought it was a little bit.
Sorry, what's going on?
Are the department heads not answering your questions to your liking, or understanding, or? Yeah, our fines are. I noticed you haven't signed anything out. I'm just wondering personally if you wanna know, because it's our job to, like, be prepared, listen to the department heads, if they give us good direction.
You gotta be able to do something.
Why are you signing it, because I know you sign it when we go to city council.
Why am I to put them?
On Wednesday nights, I'm just wondering. Yeah, think about it, let me know.
Yeah, be happy to talk to you about it later.
Chuck, where you wanna start?
I'm gonna start on mine, nineteen fifty-two.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Nineteen fifty-two is a refunding of a bond that we already have in two thousand and twelve. We went out and had thirteen million dollars worth of bonds, now we have eight million, five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars remaining. And then, when you do bonds, you can't refund them every year, within each one, there's usually time periods that you have the opportunity to refund them. This is the year to do that, and this year, it makes sense, I believe the interest rate's down about a percent. The savings to the city is about forty thousand dollars a year, I believe, if you're someplace. It's four hundred eighty-eight thousand over the next eleven years, this year would be the smallest, it's about twenty-five to thirty thousand. Every year thereafter, it'd be about forty-some thousand dollars in savings to the city and reduction in principal costs.
Questions? Go ahead, Councilman Corrigan.
Do you wanna go first?
In here, it said that there's, it referenced a city council meeting that's gonna be held on thirteenth of March of twenty nineteen. Not, I don't.
Is that next Wednesday?
Yeah, I, I was wondering, is, is that a typo, or is that, is there actually a city council meeting, business?
This is a resolution that you guys will pass, it will be a council meeting a week from Wednesday, or two weeks from Wednesday, whatever date that is, that's when you guys would vote on this, that's what that.
Okay, so, so not the, not the thirteenth.
Okay, so I have to change it to eighteen. So this is a draft, tactical resolution.
Or are you referring to the letter from pockets?
It's on page one.
It's, it's all over it, it's, it, like, every.
Look under the extractive minutes, the, the date just needs to be in there.
Yeah.
Need to change to that Wednesday.
Just add seven to whatever the numbers.
That was all. Twenty.
Yeah. Councilman Corrigan?
Thank you. Chuck, could you, could you provide just a little bit more explanation? This might be just verbiage more than anything else. But I think the, I think the idea generally here is, you know, that it's, it's almost kind of like we're almost taking out a second mortgage, so to speak, to refinance, if you will. And if, I was wondering, from a bond perspective, if you could explain the difference between refinance and refund?
Really the same thing.
Right, yeah.
When you, when you're talking bonds, you're talking about refunding.
Right.
Okay, not refinancing, but that's what you're really doing, the way you do a mortgage. You basically have this set up for, say, a twenty-year.
Right.
Bond, it's gonna be at a certain interest rate. Interest rates in bonds are not the same, they're not flat.
Correct.
Everyone is gonna move some, as they go off in years, the interest rates usually go up.
Right.
Okay. And this year, they went out and, since it was eligible for refinancing or refunding.
Right.
Okay. We went out and saw that it was gonna save us X amount of money in interest to do it.
Yeah.
That's how it works.
Yeah. No, I, I knew that, and the process makes sense, I just, I had actually received some questions regarding that. Yeah. No, I knew that in the process. Makes sense. I just, I had actually received some questions regarding that. So I just wanted to get that on the record, that essentially, a refund is a, how we perceive a refinance to be. But due to the variable interest rate over time, that's the verbiage in the bond market. That's all I wanted to know.
The important thing though, what you could say, it's not like a second mortgage.
Correct, right, yeah.
It's the original.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
Other questions? Is there any downside to doing this?
No.
No. All we literally, yeah, literally saved money. That's all it is.
It's really the interest rates today compared to what they were in two thousand and twelve.
Okay, Chuck, on the RL one-nine-dish five-four.
Okay, this is a sewer fund. They're, two thousand and eighteen, they're overdrawing on their personal service line, as well as in their construction material lines. No, we're taking the money from the personal service line, and we're putting it into their construction material and into another personal service line project analyst. What this is, this is, I'd promise, look in my office. When we do the budget, the employees get an increase, the last pay of the year, like it's in January fourth this year, was for the hours they worked last year. So, in a lot of departments, it's okay, it flows through without any problems, or I can move a couple hundred dollars. And his, I can't, okay? So, he got eighty-three dollars more, so I got to cover that, and you're taking it out of their construction material account. There's a personal service line, which is their administration department.
Questions?
Just for the record, this is only like eleven hundred dollars. This is not like a crazy amount of money yourself.
No, and I have to do the eighty-one fifty for eighty-three dollars, because there's no other thing in the eighty-one fifty account.
Correct, right, right, yeah.
Chuck, on the RL one-nine-dish five-five.
The ramps are short, a hundred eighty-eight dollars in their electricity budget, and fifty-seven dollars in their gasoline, excuse me, they're short in their gasoline budget, fifty-seven, and then preventative maintenance, a hundred and thirty, and I'm taking it from their electricity line. Cover it. It's a hundred eighty-eight dollars. Because they were over twenty-five hundred dollars, I had to take seven thousand dollars on one of these lines. I had to come down here to do this.
Questions?
Sound good, Chuck. Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks.
Want to do Bernice now?
I'm going to do Bernice. She is out of snow money, or will be out. I don't know if she, this one I'm asking, we need to be expedited. We're moving twenty-five thousand. It is hopeful that this gets us through March. Okay, I can't guarantee, I don't know what the snow is going to bring for this Bernice. We'll probably come back in this, we're using contingency money to do this, because we're going to have a lot of other lines to do it, but we'll probably have to come back later in the year to fill that bar before, in the year. We're hopeful that this gets us through March.
Okay, questions? On the RL one-nine-dish five-zero.
I will talk about this one, but I would like to go into executive session. Basically, what I'm asking to do is to move money from super ten of the streets to a temporary service line for another worker by seven thousand six hundred and fifty, but I think it'd be times in, she's going to solve everybody in the executive session.
Going to make a motion to go into executive sessions.
And I would say that it's a difficult job to fill, and it's a difficult job, given that it's a political appointed job to fill, and...
Why does that make it more difficult? I'm sorry, I just don't know.
Job guarantees only until twenty twenty-one.
They're not, because of the time zone here.
You made me not help you.
Yeah, yeah. So, I don't know if it's difficult for previous administrations as well. It's not, it's not just us. And having, I think, a strong permanent deputy, which was our plan, and there is a permanent person in that position, was part of kind of an overall strategy that obviously isn't necessarily the case right now. But that's, you know, that's basically where we're at. It's a pretty serious challenge. It's a huge set of skills.
Is there a change in our strategy? Is there, I mean, have we evaluated current people in that position in terms of making them, you know, non-acting?
Again, it's asking someone to have a, potentially a two-and-a-half-year sunset on a position.
Are the acting folks currently not politically appointed?
That's correct.
Yeah, yes, they are. They are management tested, right. There's only one active.
Obviously, in order to be active, they are politically appointed, with that said, they have all the job security that came with their permanent CSEA or civil service position. And so, when you're talking about somebody going from a permanent civil service employee status, which they can only be terminated after a pattern of misconduct of your civil service section seventy-five, most people don't want to risk. I mean, I'm not talking specifically about reversing that position, but what we've found is most people don't want to risk giving up New York State retirement and job security in favor of a political position that they're likely to be replaced by the next one.
Hence the problem is they're hard to fill.
You're exposed to...
If you're a person who is in a standardized or a regular position in city hall, and then you come into a position of appointing, the implicit assumption is that that's a finite time period, right? You will at some point go back to what you were originally.
So, is the city experience that we get, I guess, we get maybe applicants or attention to the position, and once they find out that it's a politically appointed position, they, you know, and then they lose interest? Or are we not getting interest absolutely?
I would say the salaries and other constraint, given, you know, given the qualifications and the expertise and what kind of what we're looking for. We've had very interested individuals that have, you know, been hired elsewhere with higher salaries, and that have been active in the interview process, definitely.
P E's generally earn about double, if not more, than what they would make as far as what we pay our commission. There's also generally less E C requirements, although that's...
Trying to advance to another part of that question, is that I'm only looking for that person, okay? Tell you that I had a conversation this week with someone that might be interested in one or part of the year, okay? All of them. Jared's out. Probably is in here.
Okay, any other questions? One here. Thank you, Chuck.
Guess I have a nice evening. Hello?
Hello, welcome.
Okay.
RL one-nine-four.
Our laptop went on a frick, the PDF has shown the beginning of the budget after the S A to the city last week. I did. This sounds embarrassing. I always didn't sleep. Well, it definitely compares to the first two thousand and fourteen state, or actually the Hundred Day Speech, where my laptop plug was not plugged fully in, and there were some sparks. They're happening about three quarters of the way through, so.
The speech was not good.
The speech is, yeah, that's right. Then we expanded the C R T in that speech. Anyway, so I've got a, two RLs relating to fines. As part of the FEMA demolition program Southwest West Manhattan, we have a bunch of properties together that fines will use to expand their community garden and urban farm. The properties are attached to the RL, and this will allow about two acres in total of their urban farm. And so, we are looking to lease that for a ten-year period. That is typically longer than the standard leases we've done with fines. We typically do five-year leases, but given the number of properties and what they want to do to improve the properties, we feel it's best and a good faith effort to do the ten-year lease. It's going to change that area quite a bit. It already has changed the area just with the FEMA demos. And so, we view this as a merit of speech, kind of a concept project to show great ways to deal with resiliency. And of course, everyone around the table knows, we find this does year-round from a performance standpoint, sustainable food system standpoint, et cetera. Along the same lines of that, we're looking to utilize twenty thousand dollars in C D G capital set aside to support their program. And one of the things that we are cognizant of is FEMA demolished properties, there are restrictions, and they can't be placing new buildings in anything that would be hurt in flood. So, this will be focused on improvements that are compliant with FEMA, as well as there are other properties that were demolished with C D G funds previously, or city funds previously, that don't have those same restrictions. So we're talking earthwork, permeable, eco-raster pavement, materials for houses, they'll give you some arts projects with it. So, this will support their ongoing efforts. We have a lot of other funding partners that are supporting expansion. So, this is kind of the last phase of this project that was talked about, I think, in two thousand and fifteen, but I don't know if that's when we applied for the grant, sixteen, so. That's what we're looking to do.
Questions? Councilman Livingston.
Can you describe the process by which the funds from this capital program set aside are dispersed? Like, is there an application process? How do people, how do community services agencies or applicants know that the money's there, and how do they get it, how to get it?
Well, it's a set aside for city-based projects, and so we have to come to city council. It's a part of having, just as it says, the money set aside for when projects like fines comes up, that we can fund them, and it's restricted to capital needs and not programming needs.
Did fines apply for this?
They came to us with a funding proposal and are providing a budget. That's correct, yep.
And, okay, so, yeah, I guess I'm just trying to understand how a good, how an outside agency would know about this money? Is there an application process it sounds like?
Yeah, so there's two different things going on. So we have a capital set aside for city-based projects. Remember, you know, this is city-owned land, so that's one pot of money. Council approved separately, I'm not sure the exact amount, but tens of thousands of dollars in a nonprofit set aside, that we will advance a competitive funding round for this year. And that's going to prove as part of the fiscal year forty-four budget. That will be an open application process that anyone can apply for. The other capital set aside, we'll be taking this money for our first city-based projects.
And there is not an administrative process for that?
No.
Okay.
But the funding, of course, needs to be approved by council.
Sure, I understand.
Any other questions? Yes, she's there.
You have to do the C D G.
Yes, those are...
RL one-nine-five one here.
Is that the C D G?
Yeah.
Yeah, the RLs regarding fines, I kind of talked about. But there is two separate, one's for the lease and one's for the funding.
So you combined them and made it shorter.
Thank you, Chad. You combined them and made it shorter.
I made it shorter, but never mind.
Um, because no one ever says thank you, can I just quickly plug, this could not be possible without our Director of Economic Development, Bob Murphy, to name and for that.
It was a team effort. It wasn't just me. Mayor's office, Parks Department, Land Department, too.
Okay, Lori, you're here to discuss the city website.
In particular, I'm here to discuss, Councilman Livingston's request, you have business meetings posted on the website. I've done some research about what other municipalities do, and I guess I have some questions as to how you want me to proceed with this, and just some comments of what I've found. Okay, that's my first question. I'm going to take a step back, is do we want to continue to post, to stream the council, the business meetings on spectrum, time Warner, for the public this week? It doesn't cost us anything. The equipment is in place. The equipment is currently working. In my mind, in my opinion, if you're asking me, I would do it because it's not costing us anything, and it is a service to the public.
And the infrastructure is already there.
What is the quality of, I've never seen that show. What's the quality of the show? Anybody know?
It's not, it's not good.
And that's our line.
You can hear, I mean, I brought video that you could see. You would like to look at it. You can hear the meeting. It's one camera aimed at the entire table, so.
That's because Joe wasn't working anymore.
Correct.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
Correct. You can hear everything that's said.
Right.
I sat there and listened to a couple meetings just to make sure that the quality of the sound was fine.
Right.
It's not maybe as bright if we had something...
The silent cameras.
Right. But you can hear everything, and it is recorded, and the equipment is all working. So as the equipment is working now, it's not costing us anything. In the future, as some of this equipment needs to be replaced, I think that's the time to revisit this. But for right now, since it's costing us nothing, it is a service to the public, I believe.
Does anybody think we should not continue?
Well agreed.
Okay, okay.
I had heard that the, that the stream on spectrum has switched from like the basic cable up to a higher frequency, is that something?
Different number.
Maybe a different number.
It has a different channel number. It's a four-digit, it's a four-digit number now, it's like one thousand.
You have a digital box, which everyone, I think, is mandated to now.
Yeah, you're required to have that on anyway, so.
Fourteen oh eight or...
Yeah, it's like thirteen oh three or fourteen oh eight, or something like that.
If you have spectrum, you can't get it because...
Yeah, if you've cut the cord, you can't get it.
Right, that's correct.
And is it accessible through the basic cable package? I guess that was my question.
I don't know. I mean, basic cable means different things to different people. Every time a channel's one through ninety-nine.
I don't, yeah. You're talking about having Wi-Fi and all that. Do we need a spectral box to hear this? Do we need that one?
Oh, basic cable, we have a special box. I think, I think to address the question more specifically, that's a spectral question, not a signal.
So then the next question is, if you want to post recordings of the meetings on the website, there's two different ways to go. Do we take what we're recording now, it's recorded on a DVR, it can be up, we can create an official City of Binghamton business meeting website, and we can take those recordings at the clerk's office, trim, trim the video, so that it starts the minute the meeting starts, and then the minute the meeting ends, so that you can stream these things that don't have to do with the meeting on there, and post it to the YouTube, to our YouTube channel that we created. We would then embed links into the website on each business meeting page, where the minutes and the agendas and all the legislation are posted, and embed the link right there, and anybody could go to any specific business meeting page, click it, and you could see the recorded video from that meeting.
How much time would that take a city employee or yourself to look at the video?
For us to set it up, it wouldn't take long. We could probably teach that, Lee and Jessica, within hours to do it. I'm not sure. To trim the video, I understand it's not very difficult. I'm not sure how much time it's gonna take. I'm not sure how much time it's had, something, that's something I've ever done. Jared, you might have two more.
I've done a lot of video editing, uh, the, the issue is more that the, the title will take is probably not editing the video, but uploading, waiting for YouTube to process it and make sure that there's no, no issues, because if something's wrong and you walk away, it doesn't, doesn't post, so that'll be the, that'll be the time that it takes.
How much, how many hours do we talk a week with all the meetings? Any ideas, Jared?
Well, are, are we just talking?
Business meetings, which we already had video for, already have video files, call it half an hour a meeting for business meetings, maybe on the low side, again, depending on if some of the clerk's offices is kind of new, it may take, may take longer.
I'd like to get something for these meetings, so you have to do like the certified. So, so then your other choice is if you wanted to live stream that while the meeting is going on, that wouldn't incur, we would have to purchase a camera and we will put a computer up there instead, so it would live stream the meetings as they're happening right now, that's future, so that's a little bit more costly, maybe, I, I quickly looked at cameras today, we would have to do a little bit more research, but anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand, you get high-quality camera, good computer, set up for live streaming, would take a bit of work, but it's something we can do, that's what's.
And that would be just one, same thing.
Same thing, one camera.
Yeah, well, we could use it for both meetings.
Well, that would be, you'd sell upstairs.
Well, I want, I don't know, I just don't like having a camera that's not going through the city thing, it's in the middle, that's why I just, I don't feel safe with it.
You, you have to tell me how you want me, how, how you were this thing.
See, I'd sit for upstairs and go with something that doesn't cost us anything, but it's, it's.
Just take the video that we're already recording and post it on the website.
I just don't feel comfortable, I'll have to, video.
Councilman.
Yeah, um, I, I, I think for what it's worth, with, with, with just a broader brush, I, I think, obviously, we're all in agreement that a system that goes from an infrastructure perspective and a process that's already there, not worth changing, um, I think it's also worth noting for the public record, again, as Councilman Matson noted earlier, right, the level of quality that is, is being broadcast, the stream wouldn't be the right word for that, by Spectrum currently, that change that we saw from last year to the lower quality this year is not due to an issue of the infrastructure that we have up there now, even though, quite frankly, it is aging, it is due to the fact that Spectrum, single-handedly, made a change, that there is no longer someone to man that, so the side cameras that capture someone, um, speaking, whether it's the president, whether it's court counsel, whether it's a council member, whether it's, uh, somebody during public comment, whatever it might be, so I think that maybe it, could we at least maybe get a quote for what a mobile, um, let me rephrase, a, a camera that has mobility that can be used both in here and upstairs.
But do you want it to change focus to the people who are talking, like you need a person to run?
No, it, I, I don't thi, in my opinion, I don't think it needs to focus on.
Not a person, not a person.
The president or me or anything, I, I'm just saying a better quality than what is currently broadcast on Spectrum right now.
Okay.
Um, and for what it's worth, from a cost perspective, I will publicly put on the record that in order to get this in the city's hands, I am sufficiently comfortable with saying, if we could record it, but it couldn't be live-streamed, but maybe it's up on the web in, say, within twenty-four hours, I, I think that would be fit, don't get me wrong, streaming probably would be the, the, the best ideal, but I think we also have to recognize from the perspective of the taxpayer and being as, uh, being fiduciaries of the taxpayer's money, that from a streaming perspective, there are also ancillary and consistent costs down the road, whether it be having to use the, the infrastructure of the web, do we need to get an eighteen T or Verizon mobile hotspot in order to get that streaming, however that works, so, um, but I think better quality and be able to get that in the hands of the city, if we can at least see maybe what a, a potential price point, what that might look like.
And a camera, you said you wanted the camera to be able to come down here as well, is that what you were?
Yeah, in fact, I, yeah, a single camera that doesn't have to zoom, that, you know, the clerk's office would be responsible for, um, you know, respective Mondays and the work session, respective Wednesdays.
Can, can this be on the trial, bud?
Okay.
Yeah.
There, there's many different cameras out there, I just needed to know which way you want.
Sure, no, of course, that's a very good question.
The, the cost difference between live streaming and not live streaming is, is huge because you need different hardware and software in your device in order to live stream.
Right.
Live streaming.
Correct, yeah, exactly.
So one of the points that I, I wanted to bring up, just because, um, when we think about costs and, you know, ease of use, and I'm thinking, you know, not only for city council, but also for, um, our employees and the administration, is, um, you know, many of these meetings are there to be planning commission, especially, you know, pod, planning commission, C D A, that take place in the city council chambers, um, if there was, you know, when you're just dealing with audio and not video, it reduces a lot of long-term costs, so, a, a thought that I had is that, we all know that the city council, physically in the room, audio infrastructure needs to be looked at, and if there was a way for, you know, those meetings to be captured, um, you know, not on video, but, uh, through high-quality audio, um, you'd be dealing with a lot less of the issues in terms of training people to edit video or any of the issues, to become a drag and drop type of situation, there's also not the other cost of buying additional equipment and we have to probably replace the sound equipment upstairs, anyway.
You're saying the audio.
Yeah.
Go direct, directly on the website.
Yeah.
You put it on YouTube or maybe, you know, just go in what's.
It could be an audio file that can be downloaded, and, and so one of the things, too, is, like, this is what the Supreme Court does, they don't allow cameras in their, their meetings, you know, that, that's another discussion, but.
Second Circuit doesn't say they have, it's audio only?
It's audio only and it, it's pretty easy and it's easy for the, the residents to access as well, um, and if in the future there was ever a live-stream, um, audio as opposed to video, those costs compared to live-stream video are significantly less, I mean, I think any one of us could probably do it from our iPhones if we had some time to figure it out, so, like, to me, thinking about ease of our employees, ease of the public access and something that's sustainable, um, I would think that having, the, the focus on audio instead of video would be preferable.
In the city council chambers, the audio is particularly difficult to capture if the mic system and the soundboard aren't up to date.
Yeah.
Because otherwise you're capturing boundary mics or whatever.
Yeah. And that same issue would, would happen if we had the video system, too.
Yeah.
Some mics, who sits in, or Sophia said, previously, John, it's tough to hear you sometimes on the TV. For whatever reason, yeah.
And my microphone seems to be working good too.
Yeah, so, it's, it, it's, it's intermittent, so, anything, I think, will have to be based on upgrade to the infrastructure there, because you have pod, you have C D A, planning commission, obviously, city council, um, and that's maybe something we can look at budgeting for next year or, you know, look at at least the costs in the interim, um, you know, the, the, the audio for the speech, uh, last week was fair, but certainly not clear, there's a big echo, the mics are, okay.
You're talking about an infrastructure upgrade for the audio or soundboard?
Yes.
Okay.
Which would be important if and when there's either video live-streaming or video archiving, um, that's everything.
That's the first step for any project, basically.
I just, I just.
Early respect for the city council really, and see itself to look at rebuilding chambers, those seats are just.
The acoustic.
They are, as well, their acoustics are terrible. It's just, I know it's, it's costly, it's not gonna be cheap, but.
Yeah.
When you're doing that, let's, let's look at the cost of a camera before we start.
Yeah, I, John, I don't disagree with you, though, it's, those seats are not.
Nineteen seventies.
The ashtrays are special touches.
Yeah, they, they're more special touches, maybe come in here smoking a cigar while.
Are you in a question on the city website?
Did you have any other questions to, to answer from us?
How do you want, so you'd like me to get to a price of a camera that could be used upstairs and downstairs and also bring somebody in to get a quote on upgrading the sound system, are those the two asks you'd like us to do?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay.
Do you want her to further, uh, review live stream or is kind of everybody on the same page with the filter data poses in?
I, I, I mean, my opinion is we can forego the live stream option right now, if, if we can get, if we can get a high-quality video and audio, uh, HD or four K camera with a boom mic that can pick up the videos and as long as we get some fluidity that they can be up on wherever they're being stored and housed for twenty-four hours, I mean, just my personal opinion, I'm open to that.
Okay, we'll work on that and I will, okay, we'll make an appointment to come back and do an update.
Thank you, Laurie, for all your hard work.
Thanks a lot.
While I'm here, I would like to discuss physical security in the building, if we could go.
Yeah.
Into executive session, can you talk about that?
Yeah, I always suggest when we're talking about physical security that we go into executive session primarily because some of the details she may talk about, um, can imperil the safety of employees, like access planes, hours of kind of, uh, act, access and hours of access, um, can be problematic as far as imperiling employee and city safety, with that said, I understand that there may be content of the discussion that is public information, um, so as we go through, if anybody has questions on which is which, feel free to ask.
Laurie, forgive me, before we do that, while you're here, so, I actually got my Water Bill one recently and I paid it and the, the new website is, is great, I love it.
But live this morning?
Yeah, no, it was really, really good and I saw the login page in the upper.
You don't have to use that.
Yeah, you don't have to, but do you have to create an account?
No, you don't.
You don't even, okay, great, that's all I just wanted to show.
So that went live this morning about nine?
It was great, yeah, and it was, it was much quicker, it was, it gives you a PDF receipt right there, it was great.
If anybody takes a look, if you look at your, your specific Water Bill and you can look at your account.
History, yeah, yeah.
History of, I think, three years of your water.
Yeah, it was really good.
Scroll down to the bottom, and I can't remember what it says, but there goes a hyperlink there, you'll actually see a graph of your water usage.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, no, it's, 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 well done, well done on that, a great job.
Yeah, you had such a good experience, you wanna pay mine, too, or?
I did, I paid the convenience.
I'll take a motion if Laurie Deacon says.
So.
Second.